You've got mail.
Okay, I got four blocks. Let's get a couple.
That's on time.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, welcome everybody. We had the minutes sent to us. I won't take them in the packet if I missed them. Hope you had a chance to look at them. Is there a motion to approve?
That's what I remember.
Let me make sure that was the one. Well, you sent it to the July 22 minutes, didn't you?
Yeah.
I thought you had. I thought the couples were.
Yeah, I looked at it. It's one of the few approved. Yeah, that was the one. It's set right after.
Was that from me?
Right, almost right after the view.
You all got my phone number?
Good.
You did.
Well, I appreciate that.
Because you could be here at this event before.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I remember what happened.
Okay. So any questions on the minutes or anything? Are you ready to approve them?
I'd like to know if we approve the minutes from July 4, 2020.
Hold that right here. That's right, second. That all pay per count. Okay. All right, payroll. A hundred and seventy-four thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars and ninety-one cents. I don't know what these corrections are after the side.
Um, there is a couple of errors when she was doing payroll that we caught after the payroll was balanced out. So she's went in there and made corrections.
Okay. So this doesn't reflect all the corrections that they made on the.
Correct.
On your side, okay.
Because that was the original and you'll see the last three reports at the attached are the corrections.
One five sixteen, add eleven fifty. I'll see thirty-six ninety-six.
And I have.
That's all the numbers that your system has.
Yeah, so we had to have Harris go back in there and help us make those corrections.
Okay.
Okay, I make a motion to approve payroll with corrections of a hundred and seventy-four thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars and ninety-one cents.
I'll second that.
All pay per say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next, we need to acknowledge we see the payroll claims accounts payable reported in amount of a hundred and sixty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars and eighty-two cents.
And I'll make a motion to acknowledge the receipt of payroll claims amount hundred and sixty-one thousand, six fifty, eighty-two.
I'll second that.
All pay per say aye.
Aye.
And then claims, again, amount of three hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty-three cents.
And then on the claims, I have attached this sheet here that shows your highest claims.
Okay.
The, um, and over to left-hand side where the hand typed checks that we have approved during the month.
Okay.
And looks like the highest one is a parking wreck has purchased a new truck for twenty-nine thousand, seven fifty-four, twenty-five, and then.
They always been difficult? Okay. Any questions?
Nope, I'll make a motion to approve claims at the amount of three hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty-three cents.
I'll second that.
All pay per say aye.
Aye.
Here's one more, Dan.
To that side.
And I've got these voided checks if you wanted to see them. Payroll corrections.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't sign up with any reimbursement.
I already signed.
Thank you.
Do you have anti-checks, the SRI?
Yes. And we just got that in today. If you would like to see it, we've got like a hundred and thirty-seven parcels in the paper.
Okay.
Do you like to see the claim? Anybody wants to see it?
No, we don't want to score.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the hand type check to SRI for forty-five hundred dollars.
I'll second that.
Is Chris O'Brien back there? Did he stick around? I promised him I'd get him on first if he did stick around. If he didn't, that's okay because I got paperwork anyway. Oh, good. Chris, I just said I had these papers for the care group. So if you want to explain anything, that's great.
So there's three forms up there. There's reimbursement for the CARES Act. It's the first wave of stuff that we're going to get the federal government through the state. There's about thirty thousand dollars and that covers, primarily covers a lot of the PPE that we bought. It also covers some of the remote working stuff that the courthouse bought and then some medical and telemed stuff that was purchased. So we're going to send that up to the state seeking reimbursement and I'm not sure how long it takes to get back. They haven't been very clear on how quick that will come back.
You guys have any questions on those or how that process works?
So Chris, how much? It was thirty thousand?
Yes. That's those three right there.
Have you had sent anything else in and have approved yet?
No.
Okay.
So I just need a motion from you guys to approve that we send these reimbursement requests in on behalf of the county for the CARES Act money?
I'll make a motion that we approve the reimbursement request for the CARES funds that are available to us for reimbursement for our costs involved with COVID.
And I'll second that.
All pay per say aye.
Aye.
Anybody out there doesn't understand what CARES Act is, is an act passed by Congress giving money to the state to allow reimbursement to government entities for additional expenditures, for reimbursement for those additional expenditures as a result of the COVID-19 stuff. Do you want these?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Chris. Appreciate it. All right. Jason Neiman, Toshiba printers. Yes, sir. Come on up here. Have a seat right there by that microphone if you would so we can.
If you don't mind, I'd like to pass one of these out.
That's fine. Jim, that's work. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
You're welcome.
It's entirely up to you. We feel comfortable that we're all six feet apart. If you're in that seat, you can do the mask or take it off, whichever your preference is.
You're okay. And I'm actually going to ask my counterpart, Mr. Aaron Reese.
Okay.
My contact information is also on the packet that you received.
Perfect. Thank you.
We greatly appreciate the opportunity to address the commissioners. Let me start by saying that first and foremost, these are not easy times for what you folks are doing and we do greatly appreciate that at every level. What you have in front of you is a packet called Government and Education, reflective of Indiana One or One Indiana Purchasing, and Toshiba is highlighted. If you turn to your first page, you'll notice the One Indiana Purchasing conglomerate, and this is a purchasing co-op, so to speak, that is managed at the state level. So the state of Indiana goes out and requests RFPs or bids proposals from different companies for different things that all the state entities buy. And our specific arm of this agreement that is up and coming is for copiers and printers and document management services. Not the most exciting thing that you're going to talk about tonight. I promise you that.
Once they receive you, are you unique to the state then? Are you the only one they'll purchase from as a result of their negotiations with you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's what I thought it was.
So if you go to the state of Indiana site right now, you'll see Rico. Rico is the current contracted vendor for the state.
Right.
Toshiba will be taking their place in September or immediately thereafter, once their existing agreement expires.
Okay.
So moving forward, it's all going to be Toshiba.
Okay.
So your BMB, your DMV, your NDOT, all of those facilities will be utilizing Toshiba equipment. That's all going to be managed out of our Indianapolis warehouse.
Was that a request out of Rico not wanting to do anymore or was it a competitive bid?
It was a competitive bid, sir.
Okay.
Yes. The nature of our business has changed significantly over the last few years. A lot of manufacturers are moving more toward a dealer model for acquisitions. So they're going and soliciting dealers to sell their products rather than taking those products directly to market. For all intensive purposes, we are still Toshiba. That being said, Jason and myself are headquartered out of Bloomington, Indiana. That's where our main office is. Jason lives in Tara Oak. I live in Bloomington, grew up in Sullivan County, just a few miles south of you fine folks.
There's a little, isn't it a community college down there or something? Bloomington's a little.
Yes.
Very familiar with that.
Yeah, just a little.
You're a little north.
State school. So.
Never heard of it.
No.
Right. So of course now Indiana is headquartered out of Fishers, Indiana. That's where our vice president of Toshiba Indiana sits. And he came over to Toshiba from Rico about two years ago.
Really? Interesting.
That along with a number of individuals that we've hired over the last few years have come from Rico as they continue to close local dealers or local offices and outsource their product to other resellers. So that's what's happening in the industry. They're joining the likes of Canon and some of those folks who have done that already.
Okay.
So what does this mean for the county, right? The first step to answer that question is really an assessment of the county assets that are impacted by this agreement. There's a couple of different ways that that can be accomplished for the counties that we're providing assessments for currently. Most of them have opted for us to go literally department to department, door to door as individuals and inventory those assets ourselves. More than happy to do that. Of course, we're in significantly different times than normal. So one county at least has asked that they just provide that information for us. And they're going to send all of that over in some sort of Excel spreadsheet with attached contracts for all the different departments, if that makes sense.
How would you guys prefer doing it? Actually seeing them?
We would prefer in person. It helps us for one. Yes, sir. Go ahead. Sorry.
Yeah, actually I was asking these guys what their preference was. But I'm glad to hear that's your preference too.
I want a little bit more of what's going on. We've got these assets right now. If they're functioning just fine.
Correct.
I'm not sure what you guys will be doing from an assessment standpoint, other than to say, well, you guys got a Rico copier.
Sure.
Because I don't think, if it's working well and it's functioning well, I'm too interested in bursing a whole bunch of new equipment just to have a Toshiba equipment in there instead of Rico, okay?
Absolutely.
Now, if, if what you're doing is assessing, you know, I guess what our needs are versus what we have and what you have available to maybe make life easier for our departments, I guess that's one thing. But so I guess I want to hear a little more. What are you coming in? What's this assessment going to do?
Absolutely. And so notice now on pages four and five, right, methodology of an assessment. What this really is is a spend assessment. It's financial. So inventory is a piece of that as far as the physical devices that we're talking about, but more importantly, how much does it cost to operate those devices on daily and monthly basis? And as you can imagine, with print volumes, that fluctuates, right? It's a carnival ride. So we look to establish typically a five-year average baseline so that we have a real number to work from. Obviously, the last six to eight months, volumes have plummeted everywhere. So we have to take that into consideration, but we also have to imagine life is normal, what that number looks like. Once we've established that baseline for your monthly spend, we look at different ways that Toshiba can implement changes to assist. And if, at the end of the day, if we find out that everything is running the way that it should and you have a number of assets that are working great for your locations, then maybe the answer is you don't do anything at all. There's no obligation, so to speak. Keep in mind that it is a multi-year agreement with the state of Indiana. It starts off, I believe, at five years with three-year attachment kickers to be assessed at future dates. The details of that are still being worked out. What has happened is competitors have got wind of this and they're trying to sell out from under it before we have an opportunity to meet with schools, libraries, and county governments such as yourself. And so we're just trying to get in front of that trend. If you don't need a copier for another five years, I don't want to sell you one.
Okay. How about maintenance? Bruce's question there. If we have a perfectly copier but it needs a maintenance and Rico is no longer our partner, how do we accomplish that?
So your existing agreements would continue at whatever original terms that you had signed.
With Rico or would you take?
With Rico, correct. Yes. We are specific to Toshiba copiers. So Cannons are serviced by Canon, Ricos are serviced by Rico. Now, in the instance of some of the local vendors that have been consolidated, maybe somebody does Canon and Rico, but maybe that's not a permanent solution for that specific location. Does that make sense? That happens a lot. The dealer is selling one thing. A few years later, they're selling another and now they can't hold up to their end of the agreements and pull out as well. So with us, that's not a threat at Toshiba because that's, we're actually taking the reverse or the opposite approach to the market. We are currently purchasing additional dealers to turn into Toshiba direct vendors. Now, that being said, we carry other equipment as well. So HP, Lexmark, we just recently signed agreements with Brother Printers. So there are other devices that we do maintenance. And that comes down to the printer's portion of the assessment methodology. Most folks are going out and buying toner, whether it's online or from a local vendor. But they don't, they don't realize that that toner prints a certain amount of pages. So you get an effective print rate from that toner, right? If I have a toner that costs fifty dollars, it prints five hundred pages, I can figure out what the cost per page is. So Toshiba has programs for both with those printers where we will maintain those devices on a cost per copy basis or just simply by buying the toner through our aftermarket sales out of Louisville, Kentucky that drop ships things like Amazon. So it's a multi-phase approach and I honestly, for all intensive purposes, Mr. Hartman, I can't fully answer that question because I don't know.
Well, sure.
But that's what we look at.
I wasn't trying, I'm not trying to question. I'm just trying to what this is.
Understand the process.
Going to do.
And what we're accomplishing.
That way I can answer Jim's question.
Correct.
What we feel like, whether we should be in person or send you what we've got. So that's all.
So notice also on six, pages six and seven, and this is really the nuts and bolts of what we're doing. We're assessing the county as a whole, but we're also diving into the individual departments so that you gentlemen can make a good decision moving forward, right? Maybe you have some departments that need addressed. Part of our in-person assessment and the reason that I ask for that is because that gives us the opportunity to speak directly with department heads and find out what they're currently making. What are they currently printing? Are they going about that in the right way or fashion or is there a better option available? Maybe there's a better option with the equipment they already have.
Has the plant office got their printer yet?
We just got it last week and it's like, it's either two-year or three-year contract because they're all the same, five years. They're all the same five year. And our ink is already included in our contract, so we don't pay extra for that.
Which is, we all have measures together. We don't really have an option. So that's why we're going to have to achieve. We're going to buy stuff.
Yeah, I don't question. I work for the state of Indiana, so I'm very familiar with the QPA's and how that, I mean, our sheriff's department, I'm sure gets most of their squad cars or their cars from the QPA.
Absolutely.
The state has issued, you know, so I understand that whole concept. When we do have to have a copier, I have no problem going with Toshiba, going with the state QPA. That's not the issue. I'm just trying to, just trying to understand what this kind of interim assessment is going to do.
Sure.
Because we do have fairly new machines that I.
Sure. And contracts.
Yeah, with contracts that.
Absolutely.
I don't want to necessarily jump into a new contract with machines that are working functionally well. But with that being said, no cost assessment, all you're doing is kind of giving us an idea of, of, at least in your opinion, what we can do.
Sure.
For our departments.
Just so you know, Bruce has been down this road lots of times. He was the head dog of state board of accounts until he retired.
Excellent.
He was the head dog. So we're like, we're fortunate to have him because he, he does catch these things that maybe Dan and I may not be familiar with, so.
Absolutely. And quite honestly, for us, what we win in this situation is we know what your agreements are and when they expire.
Sure.
And that's for me, probably why I'm more comfortable with having a hands-on look because just because we have something on a, on a sheet or on the insurance ledger that says that that machine is there. Maybe it is, maybe it's not, you know? We don't know what's kind of going on. If we're going to start new with new people, I like to have an accurate count of actually seen, seen the machine there as we know.
Correct. That also will help us to establish what an implementation schedule would look like because acquisition happens at the most opportune time for the county, not for Toshiba. That's fair. We are here to help you folks, not just here to sell copiers. From a pricing perspective, it is one of the more aggressive QPA's that I've seen in the copier industry. We have seen already that some of the assessments that we've done, for instance, Owen County, their commissioners approved a consolidation plan about a week and a half ago. It's going to save the county over sixty-eight thousand dollars over five years. And that's simply because we bid it extremely aggressively. We weren't going to lose, in other words. So whatever that timeframe looks like, this will help us establish that for you folks as well.
You okay with that, Dan, if we go that way?
Yeah, I'm fine with it. I just. I just know we pretty well have all new printers right now.
Take a while.
In some books, yeah. We were down in Orange, not Orange County, Martin County, last week toward the end of the week and they were literally getting deliveries as we were walking into the doors. So we're fully aware of that and please, no expectation on our end for, oh, we found it, we did all this work and you got to buy it. Now, that's just not how we do business. Quite frankly, that's probably why we're sitting where we're sitting at the state level.
Okay. So anything else?
That's all I have for you gentlemen this evening. I guess the ask on our end.
Do you need, do we need to make a motion to authorize them to go into the offices to make the checks? I think we probably need that.
I'll just make a motion that we allow, and I would just put Laura's name out as the county auditor, that she would contact our county auditor and coordinate the in-house assessment with her and with the other departments at that point in time.
And then we can make Laura to get an email out to all the departments. This will be taking place and then expect that to appear.
Identify the departments that this will be coming down the pike, you know, how many you can do in a day or, you know, this may take a week or spread out over a couple of weeks. But she can kind of let them coordinate that. And she can give you then our rules as well because I, I think we're still face masked, are we not, at the courthouse?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so we're still face masked at the courthouse and that kind of thing. We have one entrance that you go through, so she can kind of lead you through that as well. So anyway, I make a motion that we allow the Toshiba people to do the assessment of our copiers and work through Laura.
And I'll second that.
All pay per say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Appreciate it.
Have a good evening.
Yep, you too.
Thank you, guys. Be careful.
All right, we have a, oh, Chris is next. Come on up, Chris. What, so what'd you buy?
Two thousand, twenty-one Chevy Colorado.
Brand new?
Yeah. So I got the government rate on it as well and it comes with the bed lighter. An AC.
Living a life of luxury.
I know, right?
Twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents.
Yep.
Okay.
I got the bill of sale too, for you guys to sign off on.
So we'll need an out cycle check for that then, is what you're asking?
We just, yeah, we just put it in there.
I just saw it on the invoice here, the hand type check.
We just need to sign your legal paper, right?
Anyone need to sign?
Yeah, steady plow.
Just a lot of numbers? So did we trade something in to accomplish this?
Nope.
Nope.
We got to heat that other truck, so should be good.
Things are going okay out there?
Oh, yeah.
Good.
So.
Booked up?
Doing what?
You're booked up all the time?
I've been very busy.
Great.
Yeah, so.
Seating things all dealt with and done?
It's done, yeah.
So everything's up and running. Good to go.
Everything's up and running.
Nice job. Appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem.
Need some more hollering?
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris?
All right, we have a, a letter here for annual reimbursement. As you can see, it's just letting us know that that amount of ten thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and eighty-three cents will be coming sometime after July 31st. We have a claim here from Travelers and, which I don't really understand. What's that about? Nick, have you ever seen that? I haven't read that one.
Well, I was, Chris was still here actually. Something happened at Rockville Lake, all that I see, and that somebody struck a tree possibly.
Jason, will you see Bean Catcher before he gets away?
That's the first I've heard of his. And the other one was just a rock flew out of windshield. Very similar last names though. On the other claim, windshield when they were doing mowing along Bridgestone Road.
I didn't know we were doing mowing. I didn't know we had a mower.
I didn't think we were doing mowing.
I didn't think we were either.
There has been mowing down on Bridgestone Road, but it's been a while.
By accident, July 15.
Good.
Yeah, the names seem like they're suited for two different.
I don't know if that's a typo or if that's just.
Talking about Morton, the Morton claims?
Yeah.
Travelers?
Yeah, one's on the mowing on Bridgestone Road and then the other one's in Rockville Lake.
What happened? We got a court claim here against the lake, against you guys out there. You know what that's about?
Oh, Mr. Dillon.
Well, that's claim handler.
He got denied. We had a tornado warning, oh, was it a week or two ago on a Saturday? It knocked the limb down, like ninety-five percent of it was in the woods and maybe just a couple inches and he ran into it. He said it was overgrown. It wasn't. I took pictures of it. I sent it to the insurance.
Okay.
And we actually won that.
Okay.
So it's.
It's done, done?
Yeah, yeah, it's done. All right. He was denied.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you very much. Didn't know what that was.
Yep.
You thought you were in trouble, the sheriff. Dragging back.
Said he had plates on that new truck.
Yeah.
See you, guys.
Looks like he may have tried again, depending on what the second guy's middle name is.
Yeah, Dillon or Dillian.
I don't know if that's a typo in the last name or not.
We have a letter here from the Secretary of Interior. They're in the process because of all the stuff going on about the, some places are removing statues, particularly I know Confederate statues, but now it's anybody, George Washington, if they had a slave or whatever. And they're looking for places to consolidate those in a historic park someplace. And the letter is just asking us if we have any place in mind to do such a thing and/or if we have any statues for which we would have that request. We really don't have anything like that, so I don't know that we really need to respond. They asked us to, but, but that's what, that's what that is about. They are looking for places for national gardens, for open spaces. So if we have any statues that need to be taken down and replaced before they get trashed, then we should let them know and they would participate with that. Is that the way you understood it?
That's the way I understood it.
Want to be close to a large population also, so I don't know that we can accommodate that.
Represent us out.
Okay. Then the other thing we have there under. Okay, then the other thing we have there under our new business is another tort claim. This comes from the county law office. And.
And I don't have much information on that. This is the first I've seen about.
He apparently had a wreck.
Right.
And we are being damages are claimed because of partial negligence on, on us and the highway department, the commissioners, and Park County in general, state of Indiana, Department of Transportation, for a whole list of things here that apparently it was dark and the, and the place where he had his problem was not lighted. I'm a bit concerned. If you go to the police report.
There's alcohol involved in the.
Yeah, he had been drinking, drugs, medication were involved.
Right.
Higher rate of speed. This copy that I have doesn't show very well. The, the letter I got, it shows it pretty well. And so higher rate of speed involved, so probably not much to worry about there, I wouldn't think, so that's what that, that is about. Before we go on, often usually, this is the first time it's really come up for us. I, I got a call today from an employee. It's about the third or fourth I've had, question about HSAs. Why are they, why are they not being paid till next week? And I explained that I, my understanding is the census, uh, census date is August 1st. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So I tried to explain to me guy, Tess, and in fact, he hung up on me. I was one of our county highway workers. I said, well, the census day is August 1st, which they couldn't obviously do until today. So they can't take census of who. But I said, it's pretty simple. On this date, either you are an employee or you're not an employee. If you are an employee, then you get the HSA. If you're not an employee, then you don't. But they can't obviously do the census and get the checks out in the same day. They have to be able to go check, make sure that's how it is. The other question I had was, we have a, a person that's, I don't wanna say playing the game, so I don't mean that, but making the best of what the opportunity is, I guess, is what it is. He is, he's already turned in the letter of resignation. His last day of work is tomorrow, as I understand. And, but today is, but today is the census day. So as of now, he is still an employee. He is still entitled to the HSAs. We don't pro-rate that. So I don't like that, that we have that, for as possible, that someone knows they're not gonna be working in the second half of the year. They're gonna resign the second day into the, the second part of the year, but they're still entitled to the HSA 'cause that's the way the, that's the way it's written. So you just get people sometimes who get in that situation. And I, I can't blame them for taking advantage of the system. I mean, I don't know that I wouldn't. I mean, if you're entitled to it, you're entitled to it. So that's what it comes down to. So if you hear about that, that's what, that's what that's about. I don't think he's defrauding anybody. I don't think he's taking advantage of anybody. I think it's just an unfortunate situation that if he had resigned last week, then he wouldn't get the HSA. But by holding off until that date, then he's entitled to it, and he is entitled to it. So I don't, I don't begrudge anybody for taking advantage of what makes their family better, as long as it's legal and it's upstanding, and I think it is, so. Just so you know, so that's what.
And we are doing those. Colleen's been working on that all day today.
If I get a call, what do you expect them to go out?
By Friday.
By this Friday?
They should be receiving by Friday. The ACH payments go right into the bank and everything. It should be by Friday.
Except those who are the bank, not to the individuals.
No, it goes directly into their bank accounts.
So it should be in their accounts Friday, then?
We're planning on it. If everything goes right, it should be by Friday.
HSA is a health savings account. Several years ago, for those who didn't know, several years ago, we were in negotiation with insurance companies. And by raising the premium considerably, we saved, I'm raising the deductible considerably, we saved a, a huge amount in premiums. But we didn't wanna stick that cost to the employees, so we created an HSA account, which we basically are giving them the difference between what their deductible was and what their deductible now is, so there's no additional money out of their pocket. But we then, as a county, save the lower premium costs. So that was at no cost to the employee by having the higher deductible. And it's actually better for them because those employees that don't reach their deductible, whatever is left over is theirs to keep. So it's really a win-win for everybody on that, on that deal. A lot of people don't understand that. They think that that's, you know, too high a deductible. And it is high, but we're paying that, that part of the deductible. But by having an HSA that also kind of encourages the employees to be better stewards of the money, because if you don't spend it, you get to keep it. Before we did this, if, once you made your deductible, then it didn't matter what you did, because you're gonna spend all the money you can. But it doesn't matter, it's not your money anymore. Now, now, of course, I mean, you can keep that money and carry it over to yours. It's yours forever. Even if you change jobs, it's yours forever, used for health costs. So that's what that is, should that come up. Okay, we have a letter from Cassie here, Whittemire with the plant commission.
Before we go to that, can we, I get one more new business that.
Sure.
Um, that should have been in your packet and then.
Oh, yeah.
And I, I just got this in mail today.
Oh, I know what this is. What, what this is, they were doing studies for South Market Street. I can use my, I don't think it's in the packet, but it was in my.
It is, it was in my packet.
Oh, it's in the packet, okay.
Right there's a card to sign.
And they have a, they have a list. It is, it's just nails and, and pipe and chips of, chips of maybe old, old pottery or some, some such thing. Our choices is, they have it, the company that did the digging has it, and they can either return them to us or they can go ahead and give them to Ball State University. And Ball State then would categorize them, see if there's anything of any significance historically, and they would be able to categorize those. So we have a choice of either letting them go to Ball State to be dealt with in a historic manner, or they can return them to us. What are your, what are your wishes?
Let them go. I mean, what are we gonna do with it?
If it was anything of value, then I would, I would encourage you to go to the shore side, yes, to the museum, but.
It looked to me, when I looked at it, red, it's pretty well four common nails and a couple little chips off of a clay pot.
Yeah. So there'd be no value to us, the shore side, to have that.
And it said, if you just ignore it after 30 days, it will go anyway to Ball State.
So I can either sign this, I, I, if you're okay, I can sign and send them back.
Give me a motion, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Go to Ball State. Unless you've seen anything. I mean, there weren't even square cut nails.
No, no. So if one of the checkers signs says, I wish, we wish. The archaeological material found on said property will be turned over to Ball State University for curation as research and education mature. Are you okay with that?
That's a motion I make.
And I'll second.
All payers say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Laura, it's okay, I'll just sign it and go back to you guys.
Yeah, do the rest of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now, planning zone, you guys have any other new business?
Nope.
Okay. Cassie sent a letter talking about some property in Diamond.
We had talked about it before.
Yes, we have.
Days before the COVID virus hit or whatever. I just hadn't sent any notices out. It was property that was reviewed by the county through tax, sold and some adjacent property I was, had expressed interest in.
Okay.
We just have to go through notice procedures, all the adjacent property, always in case there's more than one that has interest.
And we wanted to make sure that we were getting fair market price if we could, if we could. And if we don't get offered fair market price, then we have to come back to us and make a decision whether to sell it for that or not.
At least run that to paper or something, do something. Right. I mean, I just want to be fair.
Instead of be open to anybody at that point, if we run a bit.
Do you need any action from us to pursue?
It just depends on whether we wanna operate off the assessed value or we wanna have an appraisal done on the property, I guess.
I wouldn't go.
I don't say it's worth having an appraisal.
Appraisals probably cost more than a property.
My recollection, when I looked at it, wasn't, the assessed value wasn't something substantial. It was.
Seems pretty low.
Yeah, that's my.
I just need you to get it back on the tax.
That's the same way.
I take care of it.
So I just need to.
But if you just turn around and give it, then somebody's gonna say, I would have bought that.
So do you need action from us or what?
Just authorize me to run notice in the paper, I guess, advertising the sale of it or accepting bids of it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I'll motion to that.
And I'll second that.
All payers say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So we have a resolution for a speed limit on County Road 375.
Yeah, it's done. I had a couple, actually, but here's 375's potential one. It just set the speed limit 30 miles per hour on that road.
I don't remember 375. Where's that?
Set to where we done four weeks ago?
It's from Rosedale Road, south to Cold Bluff Road. It's a total of 1.005 miles in raccoon.
Okay, I don't remember that. The one we did a couple of weeks ago was a, a thousand north, just temporary.
I have it here, too. But this came, this was the one where Randy was gonna email me some specifics on it, and that's the specifics. There's what he emailed me, if you want me to.
So that's also the Diamond, in the Diamond area?
I don't know where Cold Bluff.
Yeah, it's down Bridgerton area.
Well, it's Diamond area.
What is it?
In Diamond area.
Oh, is it Diamond over there?
Cold Bluff Road, yeah.
Yeah, I remember Cold Bluff Road. You did that latest?
It just made the class D fraction, want to find up to $500 if you speed on that road.
Okay. So we just need an ordinance, ordinance number?
Yeah, I didn't have the.
Twenty twenty, what were you doing?
Eleven.
Eleven.
Here's the thousand north one.
Let's just go ahead and do this one first. And we just need a motion to approve ordinance 2020-11 to establish a speed limit on County Road 375 from Rosedale Road south to, uh, Cold Bluff Road.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
I said.
All payers say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Let's go ahead and do that, and then we can send it around, sign it at the same time if you wanna do that. So you got a thousand.
What's that like? That'll be eleven. This'll be twelve.
All right. So this is on a thousand north, thousand north. There's a up by where 41 is closed. Thousand north runs east and west, and will go over to Carpenter Road, and it goes up then to 1200 and then back to 41 that direction.
It's over to Grange Corner.
Yes, Grange Corner.
Yeah, I'm familiar with it.
So I'd make the motion that we adopt ordinance 2020-12 establishing a speed limit on 1,000 north.
I'll second that.
All payers say aye.
Aye.
And all right, we have two places to sign here. One for same day, same meeting. I guess we better get that in a minute. We don't want to slack that. So I'd make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2020-11 and 2020-12, same day, same meeting.
And I'll second that.
All payers say aye.
Aye.
Be sure when you sign here that you're signing on the approved assignment. We have approved or rejected. We don't do these very often, but. Bruce, need you, need you up here, too, please. Same day, same meeting.
Add the same on that other one. I'll just give you Bruce. It was two places also.
We try to get.
It's also two locations.
You changed that signature a little bit there. A little more squiggles in it. You're just on that all day. All right. Anybody have any other old business?
I have one more ordinance for you. You guys had a true fair housing ordinance. This is just adopting the Civil Rights Act of 1968 as amended, the Housing Community Development Act of 74 as amended, and Indiana Code 22-9.5 hyphen 1 as amended. It just updates the housing regulations in the county to adopt the federal and state regulations. And the reason this was brought to you was in regards to the OPRAS funding that was coming as far as the businesses and things in the area. So this is just the actual draft of it, and it's just, it's, I drafted, it's just the adoption of what the federal and state government have on fair housing currently.
So we just need a motion to adopt this?
Right, same day, same meeting.
And this would be 2020-12?
Thirteen.
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 And that's so we can secure funding from OPRAS through the state and federal governments.
We have before us here, our number 2020-13, Government Fair Housing Regulations in Park County. I make a motion that we adopt the ordinance 2020-13, same day, same meeting.
I'll second that.
All payers say aye.
Aye.
Then I make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 2020-13.
I'll second that.
All payers say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I have one more ordinance on some other county.
Okay. Let's get this signed. You give over the orders, see if you can test it.
I lied, I have two more things.
Oh, was there another line for a same day, same meeting on that?
There's a bottom one that just says approved, and the top one says same day, same meeting. I didn't have the rejected part in it, because you'd already indicated.
Okay. So you were right, Bruce. There was another blank shirt on.
Thank you.
Okay, what else?
Um, we had a prior tort action. We had an officer for the sheriff's department was serving as backup or supplemental to a Clinton PD officer, and there was a tort claim filed against all the officers involved, including the county, as a result of that. The insurance company, I had afforded this offer, we wanted, we have a right to consent or not consent to a settlement offer. We've almost reached our deductible. We're about 3,000 short of our deductible. They wanna offer to settle with the opposing party. And they wanna know if we consent or not.
Are you familiar with this, Jason?
Uh, a little bit. It happened in Clinton, I think.
Justin was kind of of the, of the opinion, as I almost always am, about opposed to settling on those. Rarely, we had no involvement. He just came to the assistance and helped the Clinton officer.
Like you guys are gonna be named in it, so.
Yeah. What's your opinion? You're the, you're the guy.
So, I mean, our, our capacity to apply, I mean, we're almost there, deductible of 3,000, so that's really the most that you guys are gonna get. The insurance would pay anything over that anyway. So they're offering them forward to try to settle, but that, the other thousand would come out of your insurance company, not out of the county. So you're basically maxing out your deductible if you settle. And you're gonna max it out if you fight it, so.
Did we do anything wrong?
I watched the body cameras in that case. Actually, I don't think our officer's at fault whatsoever.
So we just.
I just pay in these bombs that.
It just opens the door for more claims, would be my other statement.
Yes. Yeah, I, I think we ought to resist that. And you're comfortable that goes to, goes to court, that we wouldn't have to pay anything?
Your deductible is exercised, according to the insurance company's attorney, at $5,000, and you're already at 2,000. So your exposure is really $3,000.
So there's not much reason not to go to court.
Yeah, it's exposure. So same, I say we don't.
And so the insurance, all that happened here is the Park County officer came to the defense of the Clinton officer as the situation escalated through no fault of the Park County officer, is what the insurance company attorney seems to think, having watched the body camera. I agree at that viewpoint.
Okay.
Having said that, I, I don't do this type of defense work, so his opinion probably carries more weight than mine.
But it's probably his opinion that we don't need to spend anything on it, because we probably won't be required to pay anything anyway.
Yeah, I mean, I, I sent you the entire.
Yeah.
Email on that.
But the most, most will be out of pocket, be 3,000 anyway.
That's right, yeah. And you'd be offering that.
We're gonna be out of that either way.
Yeah, so I think we just ought to fight it. Cause I really, as Dan said, I'm really reluctant just to pass out settlements, because it's easy to go. We'd be a target for everybody then.
That's right.
Okay. And do we need a motion then not to accept the offer for settling? Do we need to make a motion for that? Then I'd make that motion. Then we reject the offer, offer of settlement in that case.
And I'll second that.
All payers say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I'll pass that information along to the attorney for the insurance company.
Okay, I have one other, other thing. Actually, I have two other things. Would you guys be okay with, well, we did on the, uh, thousand before we had this ordinance? I don't know that we need an ordinance eventually on Mill Road, but Mill Road is getting all the traffic now from 59 as they go around that blockage. I understand it doesn't really put the deputies in tough shape. It just wouldn't be anything enforceable. But would you be okay with directing the highway department to put 31 hours speed limits on 30 anyway, try to, try to slow traffic down? There's a homeowner down there that they go flying by his house, and he's got signs up with his kids and stuff.
I don't have a problem with it. I mean, is this gonna be temporary?
Temporary, yeah.
Yeah, I have no problem.
We can always address it later, do an ordinance on that, but it's a very long stretch for 30s. Not, not much on their way to traffic, but. You okay if we ask Randy then, just for temporary?
Yeah, I don't have a.
I don't think we need a motion for that. If you're okay with that? Or do we need a motion on that?
For a temporary? I think you probably ought to. That way Randy has some securities operating at your direction.
Then I make that motion, that we put some temporary speed limit on Mill Road from 59 to Ferndale Road just for the duration of the road, the blockage on State Road 57.
I'll second that.
All payers say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the other thing I talked to Nick about, now, we had talked about this before, and this really is not reflective of the tough call on the Bridge Festival up here, but we've had difficulty, as you are well, well aware of, with TMLs and everybody getting TMLs. I don't really think it's our responsibility to go to sites and deliver, hand-deliver TMLs. I don't really think it's our responsibility to go to sites and deliver, hand-deliver TMs to people who have set up on landowners' property. And a lot of landowners take the responsibility of getting the TMs, or making sure they are anyway. I'd like for us to work at, and then you create something, then we look at it, requiring that the landowners have a, make sure that their vendors have a TML before they're allowed to open a business, because otherwise, the landowner really is allowing an illegal business to operate if they're working for a day or two before the order is finally catch up with them, make them buy a TML. I just don't think that's fair to all the other people who made the effort to come in and get a TML and do it the right way. I don't think it's up to anybody to chase them down and make them buy the TML.
No, I think it should have a fine go along with it.
I agree.
If someone sells them, does not have a TML.
A fine on the landowner as well, is it, now on, now on a TML, is there a fine involved? If somebody's doing business without a TML?
I don't know, I haven't looked at that ordinance for quite a while.
I haven't either.
I was mixed with that recently.
It's something I'm in the process of researching, I don't have that research with me.
And I'd be fine if you want to include both of those in that ordinance, that operating a, an illegal business, which would be a business without a TML, on a landowner, there'd be a fine on the landowner as well as on the vendor who's operating without the TML.
But there is a thing in Department of Revenue underneath their tax library that can, has Park County, if you don't have a sales retail merchant certificate, then there is penalties for that.
For not having a retail merchant certificate.
Right, but it's designed that, is strictly designed with the Park County covered Bridge Festival on.
Yeah, but the TML is just for us.
Yeah, because if you have a retail license and you're open year round, you don't have to have a TML anyway.
Right.
Yes, you have to have TML.
If you're on your location, you don't have that.
Yeah, if you're on your location, you do not have to have a TML.
You only have.
If I'm on my location, and I have.
But if you're doing any type of sales in state of Indiana, you're supposed to have TML.
No.
Supposed to have retail merchant.
Only, that transient merchant license is only for your transient merchant. A transient merchant is anyone operating their business at a location other than what's listed on their retail merchant certificate.
Yes.
So, like me, I sell my maple syrup at my house, I don't have to have a TML. But if I go to the fairground to sell maple syrup, I have to have a TML, because I'm not at the location. So not everybody has to have a TML. If you were doing business on your registered residence address on your retail certificate, you do not have to have. But if you were doing business outside of that location's address, I don't care if it's right next door. If you're off the boundary of that address, you have to have a TML.
Correct.
That's what the words are, transient merchant license. You become a transient merchant when you leave your registered location on your address, on your retail merchant. You'll become a transient merchant when you've gone someplace else to do business, you have to have that. If you own property, you have someone else come in and set up on your property, they have to have a transient merchant license, because they're at an address different than what their retail merchant certificate is.
Correct. Well, in this ordinance, it just requires them to produce their TML to the landlord.
And we have two different ordinances, one for each vendor and one for that order? But if you want to do it on each one, that the vendor and the landlord will both be fined?
I think I'll probably do this two separate ones, that's for citation purposes if we have to go to court.
And my hope would be that it would be, and this, I mean, I'm just throwing this out, you guys obviously get to say on this too, but like Dan said, I think it should be finable, I think it should be a substantial fine, because for a lot of those things during Bridge Festival, for example, you can charge them 100 bucks, and they laugh at you, here, here's 100 bucks. Be like, you know, any restaurant that has $1,000 a day, health department's gonna give them a $100 fine, because they weren't supposed to be open, or people are sitting too close, they laugh at that, and throw the money at it. So I think it should be substantial, and I think it should be per incident, and an incident would be each vendor and each day. So however you do that, I think a different day is a different incident, and each vendor on their property each day would be it. So let's say that I'm doing illegally, I've got people set up on my property, and I got three of them out there. You come on Monday, and you give all four of us a ticket, and you come back the next day, and we're all doing it again, you give us four more tickets, we all get one. So if we can do that, at some point, that thing could be great.
So Jim, would this just involve the officers? Or is it gonna involve the auditor's office to check anything?
The TML actually is an officer thing, but they would not be aware of it unless the auditors found them, or anybody checked. And Justin and I talked about that, I mean, they could go to a business and see if they have a TML, and then give them a ticket.
They've got the right to.
And you have a regular ordinance violation book to use that, right, for that ticket purpose? But if the auditor's down there, auditor's office is down there checking TMs, and you find one, just call them, and they'll come issue a ticket for that then.
To keep you out of the.
Then we have to decide too on this ordinance, something to think about. So they're up and operating, the order comes by, and they don't have a TML, you call the sheriff. Is that a violation? Because you were operating, now you bought a TML for the day, but you didn't have it when you were operating, is that still a violation? I think so.
You know ahead, it's a violation, and once they've been issued, then it won't be the next day.
Yes, not the next day, but that date is a violation, even though you buy it that day. You okay with that, Jason? You're okay with writing those up like that? Okay. So if you work on that, I'd appreciate that.
Yep.
Which shouldn't make their life easier.
Oh, absolutely.
Because they know there's a fine behind it.
Absolutely.
They're not gonna try to skim by for it.
And right now, we have several landowners who make sure that their people are covered right off the bat. And I know Bart used to do that all the time down there, make sure that all of his people had their TMs, he wasn't set up if they didn't have them. That's why we need that cooperation, it's not her office's job to go.
No, it's not.
Every little corner someplace, trying to catch me if you can kind of a thing on a TML. You know, it's 100, it's $100, it's $10 a day, just pay it and buy it, believe it'll be done. Okay, that's all I have, you guys got anything else for old business or new business? Alright, we just had Chris already, so are you guys anything for Justin? Okay, come on up.
Seconds, I guess. He just wanted me to recite a few things here. Jail count total is 45, with 40 county inmates, five D O C.
What's our capacity? I asked, I waited too many times, I don't remember.
I think we're only about half full. Yeah, less than half, so gotta change that. Bill, 14,000.
There's a bridge, there's a lot of people down there.
You guys have just cracked down on crime so much.
I think that's part of COVID.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I think you're right.
Bill, 14,150 cents for July for D O C in other counties, averaging 18,000 a month for this year. And since Fountain County, it would have kind of slowed us down a little bit, older inmates currently. Hopefully they'll fill up soon too.
How big is there? Is it no Fenside?
I think it's a little bigger than us, I can't, they're a little over 100, 120 maybe?
Okay.
I'm not sure, I haven't been up there yet. And since COVID, we haven't housed any out of county inmates, except for the D O C, is all we have right now.
Have we had anybody in the jail or staff test positive? I know we had.
No, we've had some close calls, and one last week, and he came back negative.
Okay.
Thankfully, so, because we're short-staffed enough right now.
Well, and that's a concern for everybody here, so spread out very fast, aren't you, four down, four officers now?
Three.
Three?
Nope. One the academy, Chris.
One by the soldier.
Rad with the lice up.
Oh, lice, okay.
I think that's it right now, so hopefully that's it.
Okay.
Chris approved?
Yeah, he's doing well.
That's amazing stories.
We walked him last night up town.
Have they ever decided what it was? It caused his heart to.
His arteries were clear, so they're saying electrical.
Really?
So that's all I've heard, I haven't heard anything different. I haven't talked to him much since we brought him home that day.
He's what?
I talked to him, not about his condition.
32?
Yeah.
Young guy, just young guy.
Yeah. As old parties like me. Definitely a good ending.
It is, it's just amazing. And I want to tell you, and you can tell all those other folks too, if you would, just speaking for me, but I think I'm speaking for us, we really appreciate the show of support that you guys did for him during this whole process. And, and even though you were down there instead of here, you had made arrangements for the state police to cover our county, and I appreciate them coming in too, to make sure that we were covered all the time. There were people concerned, well, what's happening for us, because all those guys are down there? Yeah, but they arranged for the state police to come in and cover it.
We wouldn't leave without being covered.
No, you wouldn't?
Mountain County covered us, and we want to be there down there for him.
I appreciate it, thanks.
Yep.
Well done.
Thanks, guys.
That it? Randy back there?
No, he's not, he's down. He got a message he couldn't make it.
Okay. They are, they're chip ceiling right now too, I know, so they're, they're firmly swamped, and I think they were putting that pipe in on Mill Road.
Yeah.
Okay.
See you, guys.
Anybody, thanks.
The comp time part that we talked about with Rhonda, the documents that were provided to me aren't signed off on by anybody. It just has a submission of comp time, but there's no signature that's been signed by her.
So there's no paper going in that was approved?
Right.
No.
So barring her being, our handbook requires that to be approved, if there's any opinions, so.
Is it pretty clear cut?
The documents that I received from her, though, don't have any signature from her.
Did your recommendation would be to deny the, the comp time?
She's filed something else with the state, the state agency in a way at this point.
Okay.
The only thing that's signed off is when she took her comp time, that was approved and signed off. But as far as her whole record of comp time, that was never signed off.
So barring her approving that that was signed off on, that would be my position.
We probably need a motion then to go ahead and deny that due to not having it signed. In fact, I'll make that motion, since we're talking about it, that we deny the request for a comp time payment due to lack of records indicating that it was a signed off request, unapproved request.
I'll second that.
All payers say aye.
Aye.
Can you get all that, I talk very fast.
And just so we're clear, Rhonda had signed them, but nobody else has.
Right, and the handbook says that her supervisor has to approve all of those.
Right.
Not just prove, it's sign.
Right.
Word of mouth is not approval, it's just gonna be signed.
One thing I did forget to mention, did you happen to look up the codes on the septic regulations and stuff that I sent you?
No, I haven't.
I'll send them to you again in case you need them.
Okay. I try to get everything that I can get, and sometimes it slips past.
Just subtly discussed.
Yes.
I want to run this by you guys, and for the papers too, concerning our meeting on the 17th, when we are going to have the vote on whether we're going to have the covered Bridge Festival or are not going to have the covered Bridge Festival. Obviously, we have limited seating here, so if we can get that word out, and I'll get it out best I can too, but if you guys do that through your Facebook, social media, whatever you have to get the word out, that since seating is limited in here, we won't, we won't be having a room full of people. We won't be having an open floor for debate from people coming in. We will have discussion amongst ourselves, of course, before the vote, but what I want to get out is that we will have live streaming, as we have since John started doing this, that live streaming will be available, so they can see from wherever they are, they can see it live. If there should be technical problems with the internet somehow, that he will post the recordings of the entire meeting and the vote and the discussion on that website. And that website is called Park Without Reverse, Park with an E, as in Park County, parkwithoutreverse.org. And if you go to that website on Facebook, John will have clear instructions on how to, how to get online and see the livestream. And if there is a problem with livestream, like the last time we tried, I just had difficulty, then he will post that within a couple hours after the meeting's over, so everybody can see. So it is still meeting all the open meeting requirements. We're not keeping anybody out, other than the fact that we don't have room for anybody else. We've got room for the press, we've got the workers, and we've got about three other people, is all we have room for in here, so. That's where we are. Okay, so okay with those?
Yes.
Those conditions in? Don't want to exclude anybody, but I think by the time, a few weeks from now, we will have had individually our discussions with anybody who needs to have discussion with us. I've been meeting with groups, I've got one tonight, I've got one Thursday at lunch, just sitting down with people and going through all the options. I posted on my Facebook post what all the considerations are from pro and negative of how it will work. If this happens, then those things will occur, if this happens, then those things will occur. It is not an easy decision, and we're going to impact a lot of people wrong. No matter which way we go, 50% of the people are going to be upset, either way we go. And so we just have to get in our minds whatever the best choice is, and I don't think any of us have made that yet, and we'll make that on the 17th. Anything else you need to add to that discussion? Nope. The Journal Review contacted me today, says I posted that, and they wanted to know if you could do an interview. Nice guy, Nick Wilson, he used to work for Sentinel some time ago, he's now at Journal Review. And I can trust him, I don't trust all media, but I trust him, he's gonna get it straightened out, I said, right off the bat. It's, well, to me, it's just like talking alert, and alert, and, and, I've never had them skew anything. Well, yeah, you know, I'm only saying, I'm only saying that because they're here, otherwise, but that's not always been the case with media that we've been involved with. And so I just wanted him to note, so I said right off the bat that no matter what I say, or how I may say it, or whatever inflection you may perceive out of what I'm saying, I have not made up my mind on this decision yet, we're still in discussions, and we have ongoing discussions with the groups all over the county. But we will be ready to make a decision on the 17th, and we will cast our vote then. It's time to make a choice, we'll do it then. I'll carry on this one more time, and congratulate you, or applaud you guys, or whatever you say. I think we were very wise in the way we have scheduled this. If you remember, July 4th was supposed to be the day to go to Phase 5. If we went to Phase 5 with the state, we would have no reason, in my mind, to not have the festival, even if people didn't want to come, or even if COVID still existed, because there would be no state science or restrictions giving us any reason to tell businesses they can't work. But if you recall, on July 4th, you pushed it back two weeks to July 18th. This is what I'm talking about, the part where I think we made a wise choice, we chose to push that back two weeks too. So we still have 30 days to see what the outcome was of the new phase was. And now the governor has pushed it back August 27th, we can't reach that long, because our vendors need to know if we're gonna be open, they need to be able to order their supplies and get things ready for the festival. So I think we chose wisely by pushing it back to see again, because now we are seeing a change that we might not seen two weeks ago. Our numbers are up, we're up to 45 now for us. For May, counties had quite a spike, they're up to 38 today, and they were just about like 22 last week when we had on Wednesday. We've had one death of COVID related, and I think it's still a significant question out there, and we'll have to oppose that. Hill Climate is gonna make a decision Wednesday, what they're gonna do, and we're about the only two surviving festivals in the area that haven't made a decision on these yet, and so it's time, they have to be made. And we just have to let chips fall where they make, half of them people are gonna be mad, and that's why we get the big bucks, and that's why we, that's why we end up. Somebody that got to be crucified, it may as well be us. I'm gonna blame it all on you guys.
That's right.
Alright, you have anything for us?
Yeah. When can we expect to have the stop sign for the Bridge Festival and the food signs in Diamond?
I don't know, you have anything about that?
Well, Randy, that last meeting you was here.
I read the.
I thought Randy was going to go down and look at it.
We're not.
Randy's out here.
We're not aware of where he is, the city, he takes care of it, that's what it is.
He was supposed to go back from the meeting the other day, he said he would go check it out.
I know.
There were signs missing.
Well, it, it's, there are some places their signs probably never, hadn't been for years, but yeah, there is some missing.
We have to have the liability, isn't it?
Yes, and you can look around some garages and stuff where the doors is open and see some of them. I'm sure you where a few of them are, but.
Do you have a bit of my garage?